Good morning. Welcome to the March 26, 2019, meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weiss?
Here.
Before we begin our flag salute, which will be followed by a moment of silence, I want to acknowledge the death of one of Celine County's servants for more than 50 years with both the city and Salona, and that is the passing of former Sheriff Glenn Kokonowski. So we'll be taking an extra moment of silence this morning, so please keep your thoughts and prayers in the minds of the families, for the families of Glenn Kokonowski. So at this time, I ask you to join me for a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I also want to acknowledge that after nearly three decades of leadership from Rita Deister, Rita has retired. We have a new administrator, along with a new assistant administrator. Andrew Manley has been elevated from the assistant's job to the administrator's job, and we welcome Andrew. Hannah Stanball will be the assistant administrator, and Hannah is off to an emergency preparedness meeting this morning, so she's wearing two hats right now. So at any rate, we welcome both of you aboard and look for big things and great leadership from both of you. So at this moment, at this time, we'll go to the public forum where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and on items that are not on today's agenda. Anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second motion.
Been moved and seconded, we approve today's agenda for the public forum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for March 19, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of March 19, 2019, as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we accept the county commission minutes of March 19, 2019, as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three.
Oliver Hague Scholarship Criteria Discussion.
And part of our discussion today needs to center around the criteria for qualifications and so forth. I wanted to acknowledge some Hague scholarship facts. Since 2001, Celine County has awarded 35 scholarships. Thirty-four of those reside in Celine County. One resides in Ottawa County. Currently, Celine County is funding 10 scholarships. Two are seniors that will graduate this spring. The balance in the farm accounts, which pays for this, is $182,588. To make it clear, the criteria for qualification for Oliver Hague Memorial Scholarship is the applicant must be a current Celine County student. Applicant must be a spring graduating senior entering college or vocational school in the fall. Applicant must be majoring in the agricultural field. Three letters of recommendation must accompany the scholarship application, suggestions such as school counselor, a teacher, civic leader, 4-H leader, project leader, so on. Applicant must have at least a 3.0 grade point average. The scholarship can be renewed. Scholarship money will be sent directly to the school of choice. Applicant must complete the Oliver Hague Memorial Scholarship Application, and the application is due to the Celine County Livestock and Expo Office by March 8, 2019. I think part of what has spurred this qualification, part of it is, and I will call on Rick Lamer, who is our Expo Center Director that takes care of this, but part of it is that we have -- I'll let you explain that on the applications, Rick.
Well, part of it, and I've been kind of working with Andrew on this, like this year we have six applicants, and like the first time ever, they all live, I mean, they all live in Celine County, but one of them goes to high school in Bennington. Talking to Andrew, apparently Bennington is part of, parts of Bennington are part of Celine County School District. But to me, the issue on the criteria is that first sentence. I think it should say must reside in Celine County. I mean, as far as the second part of it on the schools, I mean, that's up for discussion, I guess.
I agree. That's the part that's up for discussion, is whether we want the student to go to school in Celine County, or whether we're going to extend that to Bennington, to Tescut, to Smoky Valley, to any of the schools outside of Celine County.
Well, and I too look at that first sentence as the issue. A current Celine County student, that can be interpreted two or three different ways. Are they enrolled in a school in Celine County and live outside of the county, or are they resident of the county, going to school outside of the county? So could we put an either/or in there? Either must be attending the Celine County School, or reside in Celine County? Would that be the way to clarify it? I don't know.
I think it's up to the commission how they want to extend that. I believe we've, do you know how many we've awarded to, say, Bennington students, or Tescut, or Smoky Valley? Have you ever done that, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, we haven't. But it's kind of hard to go back. That started in 2001, and all of the applicants, I mean, the original applications weren't kept, so it's hard to go back and see exactly where they went to high school at.
Well, I'll ask the simple question, and could we put it in there that they must reside in Celine County, or go to a Celine County School? Is that clarified enough, or not? I don't, I'm...
Well, and just something, what if we just put applicant must be a current student residing in Celine County?
Then you would, then you would do away with anyone who might be going, living in Ottawa County, but goes to El Celine, or perhaps...
That's what I'm saying, is that these people have to really live in Celine County, isn't it? I mean, that's what I just, I'm with you, Bob. Every time I read this, is I read it as a different way, and it's confusing.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I think the issue is what we want this scholarship to do, and who we want it to benefit. I think we want it to benefit residents of Celine County. It doesn't matter, you know, school districts bleed over into other counties and such, but the intent is to help these Celine County students, residents, after they leave high school and go on to higher education. That's the way I look at the way the scholarship was meant to be. It's for the benefit of Celine County residents, no matter of where they're getting their high school education, because just by default of where they live in Celine County, they could be in the Smoky Valley School District, they could be in the Bennington School District. So I hate to handcuff them from being eligible, but I do think the intent was set up for this to be for Celine County students.
Residing in Celine County is what you're saying? Because conversely, based on your statement, that would eliminate a student who lives in Ellsworth County but goes to El Celine High School.
Correct.
And it would eliminate
That's right.
... an Ottawa County resident who goes to
Correct.
... a Celine County school.
Correct.
But it would, you want it to be a resident of Celine County regardless of where they go to high school?
That is how I read it. Ditto.
Same. Yeah, I don't think this scholarship is set up for people residing in adjoining counties.
And that's what my thought was. I mean, the land that pays for the scholarships is in Celine County. So, I mean, if we just say must reside in Celine County, would that cover it?
I think, yeah, rather than applicant must be a Celine County student, they must be a Celine County resident.
I think it clears it up for future commissions and stops potential problems by just making it simpler.
Any other further comments? Any public comment?
Norman Manl, Salona, Kansas. What is his official mailing address? That's where it comes down to. I can live anywhere I want, but my official address is Celine County. So I don't have to be a resident. You're going to have to clarify that with private counsel, because that is your official residence, where you get your mail. I can live in another county, another state. I'll have my mail sent to me, but my official residence is where I get my mail.
And I would take exception to that, saying your official residence is where you hang your hat and go to bed at night. So anyway, that's, thank you for your comments. I think you have our direction on that. I would assume, do we need a motion on that, do you think, or do we just need to let, have a consensus and clarify it in the guidelines?
Consensus, housecleaning.
Agreed.
Yes.
Okay. You've got your direction, Mr. Lamer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're happy to award some more scholarships. I think in our study session last week, we did appoint Commissioner Sparks back to the, to the board on decision-making for that scholarship, I think, so. Okay, we'll move on to item number four.
RFA number 124-19, Rural Water District Number One Fallen Siren Memorandum of Understanding. Bernie Botson, Deputy Director, Emergency Management.
Good morning, Bernie.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. We have the MOU for the standard MOU that we've had for all our sirens, fallen through their Rural Water District, funded about 50% of a outdoor warning siren, and the Dane Hanson Foundation funded the other half. So they have a new siren out there. It's fully operational, and we just need, they've, their commission has, or board, rather, has signed off on their half of the MOU, and we need your guidance and tutelage on the other half.
Okay, are there comments or questions from the commission? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and sign the memorandum of understanding with Celine County Rural Fire, or Rural Water District 31 in regards to the outdoor warning, siren, and fallen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve RFA 124-19, Rural Water District Number One, the Fallen Siren Memorandum of Understanding. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number five.
RFA number 125-19, bid award for hot mix patching, overlay milling, and shoulder construction. Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning. So as you said here, I'm here to request to award the bid for asphalt patching, overlay milling, and aggregate shouldering. Seal bids were open on March 13, 2019, 11:00 a.m. One bid was received from AIPAC Kansas Incorporated Shears Division. The project's set up so that the asphalt work, they can start as soon as the contract's signed, but the asphalt work has to be completed by October 11, 2019, while the shouldering work can be extended to November 30, 2019.
Justin, is your microphone on?
There you go. Better?
Yes.
All right. Sorry about that.
We can hear you, but the ones on the television can't.
Sure, sure. Okay. And so we did set the project up to where work will, must be shut down during wheat harvest, and then if it extends into the fall work, kind of depend on the road they're at and the intensity of the truck traffic for the fall harvests, whether we will suspend it at that time or allow them to work through that road. So as far as the alternatives for action, number one would be to accept the bids as indicated in staff recommendation, and number two would be to reject the bids. Staff recommends to accept a bid from AIPAC Kansas Shears Division Salina Branch for the amount of estimated work to equal $1,419,462.50. The funds for this project will be taken from the account contractual asphalt work. This account has a current balance of $1,926,970. This account does take, we do pay for other projects out of this account, and so those would be for the bituminous crack sealing and for the chip sealing as well. So we have to kind of take that, those two projects, into consideration. Both of those projects have been bid and accepted and awarded.
When we're looking at the 125-19, and then over here, it's the project number 19-5380, are those one in the same? Is that a...
Say that again? I'm sorry.
You've got your RFA, 125-19, on the second page. Is that a different proposal altogether?
Oh, the other one is for the, that is the engineering internal project number is really what that is. That's just for our use.
Okay.
Yes.
And to clarify things, what's the company?
AIPAC Kansas, yes.
AIPAC, I'm sorry, I couldn't come up with it. AIPAC was the only bidder.
Correct, yeah, and that's, that's pretty typical. You know, they're right here in town, a local firm, and if we do get another bidder, it's because there's another company that was awarded some K dot work in the area that will be mobilizing a plant in, and that's the only way they're going to compete.
Was there an engineer's estimate on this, or is it...
Yes, there was. I had, let me pull that out. I had an engineer's estimate of $1,358,100.
So slightly, slightly above the engineer's estimate.
Correct, right.
Long as, you know, we're in the ballpark.
Yes, yeah, I'm within the 10%. And the price of asphalt has, as we've gone through this year's bids on other projects, you know, the, notice the price of asphalt has gone up considerably over last year, and so, you know, do you take the last year's numbers and even bump them up for inflation? That's, that's not quite enough, is what, what we're finding out. So, but when we award a project, you know, with the hot mix overlay, whether it's the chip seal or the crack seal, you know, we pay, we, we accept the unit price of the bid, not the total bid, and so we pay the contractor for the material that they put down on the ground. And so those, those quantities can be adjusted out in the field to make sure that we stay within budget.
I see. And I don't know if it was in the study session or whatever, but I heard you say that the cost of asphalt has dramatically increased this year.
Yes.
That's correct?
Yes, yes.
Do you recall exactly the percentage, or...
No, it's, it's, you know, I've talked to a couple contractors, and, you know, they've, they've given some examples of just for their, what we call like a PG 6422, which is your raw asphalt, bituminous asphalt. Last year, they were, they could purchase the material only, you know, for around $325 a ton, and now we're pushing $480 a ton. So it's, it's gone up quite a bit.
About a third at least, so. Okay, questions from the Commissioners?
One question, Justin. I noticed in the asphalt contract budgeting that there's a reimbursement from the city for Country Club?
Yeah, there's a section on Country Club from East Borough going, and then extending that to the east on Country Club. There's a small section of that where both sides of the road is within city limits, and then there's a section of about 1,500 feet long where the city, city limits are in the center of the road. And so I've got an MOU with the City of Salina that they'll just, where the portion that's inside city limits will be part of our project, but they'll pay the contractor for that work. And so that's, that's what that's about.
Well, it's good to see everyone playing nicely on that.
Oh, yes.
Further questions, Commissioners? Public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to AIPAC Kansas for the amount of estimated work to equal $1,419,462.50.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve RFA 125-19, bid award for hot mix patching, overlay, milling, and shoulder construction. Further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number six.
RFA number 126-19, bid award for two SUVs. Captain Jim Hughes, Sheriff's Office.
Morning, Captain Hughes.
Morning, Commissioner. I'm here today with a handful, is it on?
Yep.
I'm here today with a handful of requests today, and the first one is for two police package SUVs. These SUVs would be used as patrol vehicles through Operations Division. Better?
You're fine.
Okay. And so the first one in front of you is to replace two SUVs. These will be replacing two 2016 police package SUVs that are currently in service and will be projected to have at least 155,000 miles by the end of this year. Three bids were opened on March 13, at 4:00 p.m. at the city staff office, and you can see on there that Law MacArthur Ford bid $95,777 with our trade-ins. Without the trades, they're $108,000, $108,777. Shawnee Mission Ford with trade bid $103,000, $103,094, excuse me, and without the trade, they're $110,094. Marshall Motors Salina with trade bid $88,985.98, and then with the trade, or without the trade, they're $100,985.98. All these calculations were confirmed by the command staff at the sheriff's office, and we can accept the bid as in staff recommendations down below. We can reject the bids, or you guys can explore other options. But the staff, Sheriff's Office does recommend to purchase the two Dodge Durango Pursuit SUVs from Marshall Motors in the amount of $88,985.98. Marshall Motors is a local company and is the low bidder. The funding for this would be the 20, or the pre-approved Equipment Improvement Project Fund, which had a balance of $301,000. Subtraction, the low bid from this project would leave a current balance of about 212, or $212,412.2.
I'll ask the question again, Andrew. Did we, the state bid wasn't competitive, or...
We typically don't go to state bid on these types of vehicles because they're a little more complicated. We add all the equipment on to them and the decals as well. But they, they do have the option to bid on these.
And once again, there's no General Motors bid. I presume, is it something to do with the, the way that it's bid, as this police package? Is that, the General Motors doesn't have that, or...
General Motors does have a police package. They do make a police package Tahoe. Who the bids were sent to, sir, I don't know, and why General Motors did not bid, and if they were sent to a dealership that did have that, I don't know the answer to that.
I presume they were sent to the locals, and they, our General Motors dealers here in the area have chosen not to bid, I guess, so.
That is correct.
Okay, further questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
What is the current rotation on vehicles like this? Do you have a set amount that you try to do every year? And the only reason I'm using that as an example with Road and Bridge, we buy so many graders a year and kind of stay up on things so we don't have a backlog of it.
Correct.
Do you have a plan, or is it just mileage, or...
No, sir, we do have a plan that kind of includes both. Right now, we're playing catch-up, so, from the previous year, so we have to take that as part of your answer. But the other, the big part of it is, is we try to keep the mileage. We have a projected mileage that we know we're more than likely going to put on vehicles, but if we can rotate vehicles out about every three or four years, or four or five years, depending on mileage, we know we have a reliable vehicle. We know that the service records are not going to, or hurt us on the back end, and we know more than likely that we're going to have some type of value on trade-in. So the answer to that, Commissioner, is four to five years if we can replace vehicles.
And mileage is what, at that estimated three to four years? Is that the 150,000 miles?
Usually about 155,000 to 170,000 miles.
That's, I can get that. There's got to be a window.
And I do remember my early years on this commission, we weren't funding you for it, so I understand the backlog, and I just think it's prudent to get you guys caught up and then just start having a plan.
Yes.
So everybody can, can budget for it, so.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Do you have any more that's older than these two 2016 that you would be trading in, or are these the ones you actually are trading in?
No, actually, the, some coming behind this, sir, are older than the 2016s.
Okay.
So, but... So, but as far as the, the SUVs that are police packages, the 2016s are the, are the oldest in the fleet.
Wow. Okay. And they also are the trade-ins?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, at this time, I'll ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Marshall Motors for two 2020 Dodge Durango Police Pursuit SUVs with trade-in the amount of $88,985.98.
Second.
Then moved in second that we approve RFA 126-19 bid award for two SUVs to Marshall Motor Company. Further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Item number seven.
RFA number 127-19 bid award for SUV. Captain Jim Hughes, Sheriff's Office.
This one is for a, another SUV, a police package SUV, and the vehicle replacing this will be a 2005 Crown Victoria that is currently in service, and is projected to have over 140,000 miles by the end of this year. Again, bids were open on March 13th, and we did receive three sealed bids on this. Long MacArthur with trade was $53,073.26. Without the trade, they were $54,123.26. Shawnee Mission Ford was $55,082, and with the trade, or with the trade and without the trade, and they were And Marshall Motors with the trade was $49,977.70, and without the trade, they were $50,727.70. Again, these bids were reviewed and verified by the command staff at the sheriff's office. We can accept these bids, we can reject the bids, or other options can be explored. However, the sheriff's office does recommend to purchase this 2020 SUV from Marshall Motors in the amount of $49,977.70, and Marshall is the low bid on, on this particular one.
The usage on the 2005 Crown Vic versus a replacement with a SUV, which is obviously more expensive than a car, what, what, what is that, that vehicle being used for?
This is going to be an investigator's vehicle, and the current one is, is a 25, or a 2005 Crown Victoria. SUVs are more desirable for us because there are times that we have to respond to a crime scene, and a sedan, rear-wheeled sedan, may not get down the road, whether it's snowy or muddy. Also, investigators do carry a lot of specialized equipment that is sometimes rather large. The cargo space in the rear of the SUV is desirable for the investigators to carry the oversized equipment that, a lot of it's specialty equipment that the normal guys on the streets do not carry.
Okay. Questions from the commissioners? Comments? Public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Marshall Motors for one 2020 Dodge Durango Police Pursuit SUV with trade-in the amount of $49,977.70.
Second.
Then moved in second that we approve RFA 127-19 bid award for an SUV with Marshall Motors of Salina. Further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Item number eight.
RFA number 128-19 bid award for SUV. Captain Jim Hughes, Sheriff's Office.
And this is the third proposal we have, and we're doing this because all these vehicles were bid uniquely with unique equipment, maybe unique markings on the side of them, so that's kind of why we have a handful of these. But this one is for a, another 2020 police package SUV, and the vehicle replacing this will be another 2005 Crown Victoria that's currently in service, and it should have a projected mileage of over 140,000 miles by the end of 2019. Again, three bids were opened on March 13th. All bids were sealed. Long MacArthur came in with, with a trade-in of $53,073.26, and without the trade, they were $54,123.26. Shawnee Mission Ford with a trade was $55,082, and without the trade, they were $55,282. Marshall Motors with the trade was $49,977.70, and with, without the trade, they were $50,727.70. Again, all of these were reviewed by the sheriff's office staff. We can accept the bids, we can rebid, or other options can be explored. Again, the sheriff's office recommendation would be to accept the, the bid of $49,977.70 from Marshall Motors, which is the low bidder. And this, and I forgot to mention on the last RFA, the funding would be from the, the pre-approved EIP, and with the funding balance of these two vehicles now gone, you can see we should have $112,058.62, which is on the bottom of the RFA.
Okay. Questions? The, the only observation that I have is, I mean, if a car runs, it's worth a couple of thousand dollars anymore, it seems like, but yet they're only allowing us 800 bucks for this car. So, it, it almost seems like we should, we should take the, without trade, and then sell the cars on Purple Wave, or take them to the, somewhere, and auto salvage is going to give you more than that, I would think. So, that, that's my only concern, not a great big one, but that's an observation, I guess you'd say.
Comments from the commissioners?
Public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Marshall Motors for one 2020 Dodge Durango Police Pursuit SUV with trade-in in the amount of $49,977.70.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 128-19 bid award for an SUV with Marshall Motors. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Item number nine.
RFA number 129-19 bid award for transit van. Captain Jim Hughes, Sheriff's Office.
And my final request today, sirs, are to discuss the purchase in a new transport van, a prisoner transport van, and this one is going to be kind of uniquely outfitted with a three-zone prisoner transport system in the rear. We are requesting to purchase a 2019 cargo van with the three-zone prisoner transport. This vehicle will be replacing the, a current vehicle that we are using as such, and that is a 1999 F-250 van, and with the prisoner, prisoner transport system, and currently that van has over 97,000 miles on it. Bids were, are open on March 13th, and the two sealed bids were received, one from Long MacArthur. With the trade-in value, they were offering, they offered $49,676.52, and without the trade, it was $50,876.52. Shawnee Mission Ford with trade came in at $50,068, and without trade was $50,468. Again, all of these bids were reviewed by sheriff's office staff. We can accept the bids as staff recommendation, we can reject the bids, or the commission can explore, explore other options. The sheriff's office staff does recommend to purchase the 2019 Ford Transit Van with a three-zone prisoner transport system from Long MacArthur Ford in the amount of $49,676.52. Long MacArthur Ford is the, the low bidder. Funding for this would be of the pre-approved EIP, and the fund balance, if this was approved, that the $49,000 from Long MacArthur, $49,676.52 from Long MacArthur, would leave a balanced fund of $62,382.10.
Okay. Thank you. Once again, Andrew, I'll make the observation that, or running vehicle, particularly a van, a three-quarter ton van, one of, one of the bids only is allowing us $400 for this van, and the other one's $1,200. I mean, I think those are worth more money than that. I like the way that we've done the bid because we have an option of taking the trade or, or taking it without the trade. I like that option. I just think that maybe we should take this a step further in the future, and that is ask a, a local salvage yard or somebody like that, or used car dealer, what they would give for that vehicle and the condition that it's in, and...
Captain Hughes, is there anything that we need to do to these vehicles to prepare them? If we were to sell them outright, is there anything we need to do to them?
No, I, I don't think so. The, the issue with, with these particular vehicles are they're old, they got high mileage, and they're not desirable. So, in order, and else, you know, the, the 2016s we put in, and you guys have been, have been good to us in the past couple of years of replacing these SUVs, and we're, we're getting decent trade out of that. This is, I think, a unique situation we're seeing right now because we're getting rid of a bunch of stuff that should have gotten rid of a long time ago, and I, I don't think you'll probably see this in the future, commissioners, if, if we can all stay on top of, of a progressive fleet and, and getting it replaced at the post of waiting, you know, from 1999.
Well, and I totally understand, and I, and I appreciate the, the process. I'm, I'm just making an observation that I think that there are outlets for these types of vehicles in that situation, that, and dealers that, that deal in that, and the used, or the new car dealers, I get it, they don't want it. It's, it's not on their, their radar. They're going to take it to the junkyard, but somebody was going to give us more money than that for that, I think, in the long run. So, just in the future, I'd like to see that, that five-minute phone call to somebody to ask them if they'd like to take a look at it and see what they want to offer.
To dispose of equipment, we have to offer it to the public, so if you wanted to, we actually do have a Purple Wave auction coming up. You could accept this bid without the trade, and we could roll the dice and put this van in that Purple Wave auction and see what we're bringing.
Well, we're, we're pretty well swept that under the table right now because we've already accepted three of them, or two or three already the same way, so I'm, I'm not advocating doing that right now, but in the future, it might be something that we just take a look at.
This would be a way to test the waters with just one, not with, with five, so it, I believe it still could be an option.
Questions? Further questions from the commission? Public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Long MacArthur Ford in the amount of $49,676.52 with trade-in for a 2019...
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 129-19 bid award for a transit van, Long MacArthur Ford. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. That brings us to the, now, there is another here in my packet with this minimum controlled access for an RFA, but it's not on the agenda. But can we move forward with that, with it not being on the agenda? I mean legally, what's, what's the status there?
There is a process for the gating of minimum maintenance, and the first is a study session that's on, on the next part of the meeting.
Okay. Well, all right, that brings us to the end of, I guess we will not address that at this time. Brings us to the end of our, today's meeting. Are anybody wish to comment on meetings they've attended, or comments? Hearing none, I'd like to make the announcement that the Mid-America Farm Expo is currently going on Tuesday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Wednesday the same times, Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Saline County Expo Center and Tony's Events Center. I do have some announcements of my own then, that I would, meetings that I have attended. I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting last week, and they spoke of upcoming events and received an update from USD 305 that had lots of input in it. Attended the Salina Community Economic Development Organization. They got an update from City Public Works Director Jim Kowak regarding downtown projects, timing, so forth, the projections. There was an update from Guy Walker of Blue Beacon International and their, the 2020 group and their process in this. They also discussed various potential industrial and business properties available for sale. Further, I attended the Salina Airport Authority meeting, and there are some pretty interesting numbers that come out of the airport. Number one, and some, a lot of people around town think that the airport doesn't provide good jobs and so on and so forth.[1640.51]